Is it live?
No.
It makes her live. Get him into the vision of. Where's the call? We're both almost alive.
I need to do this. This sign in. We're capturing that.
Hector.
Thank you.
Oh, my God.
Five.
Get all those buttons.
Yeah. Be. Um, he's out. I just want to go back. We need to. Okay. Right on. Well, pretty good. I know. Just saying, it was happening. Uh, by there. Oh, yeah. My goodness. Oh, but yeah. I mean, hopefully. Hopefully, that. Did we get any moment now that's look out because kind of first.
A little, a little. Yeah, yeah. I know I'm getting healthy, but I don't know if I'm like really breath deep in my brain or anything like that. I'm seeing.
Yeah. But. Rest is a well. We run a marathon that should have covered it sometimes.
I'm still trying to figure out that recovery.
That's a great analogy. I'll give her a couple more minutes.
Councilor Byers, did you see your key?
Okay.
How'd it go?
How about this? The better?
Let's hope they.
Sorry. You know, I want to.
Know that you heard. Might decide here.
Are we live? Sure. How about you?
I don't want to hear.
The, the, the high, the high view there.
If we have a, you know, positive.
Okay.
Correct. Yes, we got it. Ready, ready when you're there.
Well. And I hear you say you're ready, Hector.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, why don't we just go ahead and call the spending session to order at six oh five? We'll call.
Counselor Coley.
Here.
Counselor Penamara.
Here.
Counselor Medina.
Yeah.
Counselor Prestizo.
Here.
Counselor Byers.
Here.
Counselor Para Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Airswood.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quote.
Item number two on the agenda is to discuss the appropriate options. And related.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, members of the council. We, in discussing the council goals, um, this spring, um, and through the course of the budget, talked several times about the overall financial position in the city. And, uh, while, um, you know, on a cash basis, um, the city's financial, uh, position is strong. The, the long-term trend in, uh, in spending versus revenues, particularly in the general fund, is going in the wrong direction. Um, and the city's hardly unique in that position. But, um, like all the other cities facing that situation, we, we need to take some steps to address it. So, um, what staff have proposed, um, I sort of proposed a, a jet, a high-level approach that we're continuing working on cleanup of obvious revenue items such as the, the fee schedule that you're going to discuss later tonight. And of course, we continue to work, um, for opportunities for efficiencies and, uh, and making best use of technology, outsourcing where appropriate. And, um, and, um, this summer, spend some time thinking about how, how we want to bring in the larger public, um, the, the residents of, of talent as a whole into this discussion. Obviously, any, um, not any, um, we're going to try to find as many efficiency efficiencies as we can, the reduced costs without limiting services, but the more substantial, uh, reductions in expenditures could have impacts on services and of course, any new revenues, somebody's got to pay and the vast majority of the, of the revenues, uh, sources over which the city has control, um, our residents, um, are, are, uh, are likely to be paying those. So, um, what I, and, uh, what I was hoping that we could do this evening, if it makes sense to you all, is really to focus on that public, the public discussion and what, what, um, how we might want that to look, how we might want to carry that out. I think it's, it's reasonably obvious to me and I, and, um, League of Oregon Cities has recently done, I think, some good polling that's, that's helpful, um, as we think about public communications on the, on this kind of thing. Do we need, we need a first step that's just sort of making sure that we've got a shared playing field or shared understanding, um, with the public about what, what, what the situation actually is to make sure that, you know, as a first step, um, there's, there's an understanding of what the problem is and why the city is looking at, um, at, at both of these, both of these things. And, um, I, I laid out a few different, you know, there are obviously lots of different ways to engage the public. There are some, um, there are always changing and expanding ways to use technology to, um, to engage the public. Although with this kind of thing, my, my suspicion that is that really, um, it's, it's public engagement that at least in the first phase is heavily, um, has a large education component, a large information sharing component to it. And that, um, that can be done in writing, but probably, um, will be more successful in reaching, uh, a broader audience by doing some things in small, in, in person and not necessarily in huge groups, right? The, the lar- very large public meetings, um, one, they tend to be dominated by folks who are most comfortable speaking in a, in a large public meeting, um, and two can can be challenging to get past rules, positions, um, preconceived notions. Um, and so smaller settings are sometimes, uh, more fruitful for, um, the kind of, the kind of discussion that I think we need to have. So, um, we, um, uh, your, your attorney, um, suggested one, one model that, that sounded really interesting to, I think, several of us on the staff, um, this spring, when we were, when we were talking about this, um, as part of a council goal setting. And that would be doing a series of, um, sort of kitchen conversations, um, uh, go, doing, doing conversations in, in small, in, uh, either in homes or in places that are distributed around the community and neighborhoods and focus outreach on, uh, one neighborhood at a time and do, and do conversations, um, like that, sort of, uh, as, on a, on a roaming, on a roaming basis. And, um, I was curious about what y'all had to think about all those, all those questions, but, um, but particularly, um, if I, if I might, um, I think, thinking about, um, does it, are, are our staff on the right track in terms of the kind of, kind of questions that you think that we need to, uh, talk about with, with the public? And, uh, would serve a, uh, uh, what kind of public engagement methods do you all think might be most successful? With the residents that you know, uh, very well. And, uh, and I guess the, I, I imagine we will, we will get to some further questions that we might continue to discuss later this summer as we, as we get to, uh, refine a plan a little bit. Um, with that, why don't I stop talking? Cause my real goal here is to hear from you all.
Input from council? Counselor Perry Miller and then Councilor Byers.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, thanks, Alex, and, um, appreciate the, like, overview of the plan. Um, I think it makes sense to do kind of like a bunch of different things. I think I do hear you about the larger meetings, uh, format, but I do think that we could always do that and other things. You know, we could do like a couple of larger, um, open forums and have them at like different times. So they were really accessible to different people who have different schedules. And then, um, you know, the other thing was like potentially any ways that we can bring the committees into the conversation so that they can speak intelligently to the community as well, I think would be really helpful. Cause I know they get a lot of questions just out and about, just like we do. So those are just a couple of initial thoughts.
Thank you.
Councilor Byers?
Oh, I think this education component is the most important part, hands down. I think that your idea for the smaller groups is probably going to be the most effective strategy long-term, especially partnering with other community organizations that are already serving smaller portions of our residents. I, I think that partnership actually is really key and I don't necessarily see that connected here, but I don't know, we're out, put in this outline, but I think that would be really important. And I would almost say a training for our committee and commission members so that they feel resourced to be able to answer questions or at least direct people to where they can find the information that they're seeking.
Counselor Medina?
Yeah, but jumping off of what Anna said, um, yeah, I think the education part is really important. And I also like the idea of partnering with other organizations that work with, um, you know, smaller groups of people in our city. I also want to make sure that we include, you know, people who like are Hispanic residents and, um, you know, so that way they can give their input as well. Traditionally, they haven't had input and what goes on in talent. And so kind of like Anna said, the organization that may be able to help us could be like QualiFacción or even the school district have a great, probably a pair of liaison there that we could always reach out to.
Thank you, counselor. And the first organization you mentioned?
QualiFacción Portales.
Really? Thank you.
Counselor Penamara?
Thanks. Yeah, I, I really support those ideas. Um, I also think that additional hooks to reach out to might be some of, um, uh, our elders. Uh, the, the new rogue seniors within their calling themselves. Um, and, and also folks with disabilities. Um, these are just groups that typically get left out of these decisions. Um, I do also agree that I think a big town hall that especially if it's captured on YouTube and it's things that people can watch afterwards and still be able to see and hear the infographics really well um, could serve the folks that are not able to be at a certain time, you know, if they, if they really wanted to educate themselves, they could review. And I think that would also help our committee members who want to learn more. Having something on video is really helpful to me. I usually watch it a couple of times, you know, or go back to it if I've forgotten something, which is hard to do with in-person education. And I, and I love the emphasis on really good infographics.
Councilor Byers?
Um, I think probably actually two town halls would be necessary if we're going to hold town halls, one for the first round and a second for all the people who heard it secondhand about what happened at the first one and then have questions. I would also suggest some really solid pre-work before the first town hall, leveraging our website, the talent, um, news and review, and again, perhaps our various community partners like the, the school district, that sort of thing to solve this at questions that people have ahead of time. So we can really distill down the talking points we might not realize we would be missing. And perhaps even prepare an FAQ ahead of time to just give everyone a shared basis from which to start. And I would give that pre-work at least two months to like really engage it.
Counselor Penamara?
Yeah, I just want to add that, you know, if it, there's probably a lot of already made things like how do property taxes work? Kind of, you know, I would feel free to leverage, uh, more general things as part of like a, a package of resource for people to, who, who do want to educate themselves, but just make it really easy for them. And again, I'm thinking about there are fellow educators, the committee members.
I just want to add one thing, uh, well, maybe a couple of things, but one thing is in, you know, all the years, um, that I've gone to town halls and, and even, you know, participated in some of these smaller type meetings. There is a set of very active people that engage and then sometimes, I mean, this might be different and, and I think setting, um, uh, setting some of the pre-work up will really make a difference, but, um, it, it's, you know, I, this is not always representative of a broad, yeah, a broad voice from the community. I think, um, I, I think it's, we really do need to emphasize, um, targeting very specific demographics and, and finding different ways of approaching those demographics. So I, I would, I would take it, uh, from approach of actually targeting groups. That might provide access for that. You, you brought up the one quarter, the portal laser is going to target very specifically access to groups of people and, and really taking that, um, across the board. So I just, I, I just want to make a finer point of really what both Council Medina and Council Penamara have said about, um, identifying specific groups and trying to really infiltrate a, a broad spectrum of, of, uh, residents in our community. Counselor Coley?
Yeah, along those lines, I wonder if there's an opportunity to partner with the business community. Could have a quarter sheet that has a QR code for the virtual survey on one side and then the two dates for the town halls on the other side. The business communities, obviously, the people who own those businesses are invested in this conversation as well. So I would expect some communication directly with them, but they're also a place that people in our town go and can pick up things, you know, more than just having a flyer on the wall, but engaging with them in that way.
Counselor Byers?
Taking it even further, a similar mode of outreach in the mailed water bills, I think, would be a really great step. And you know what? I've canvassed a lot in this town. I'd be happy to hang things on doorknobs. Um, because I think this is so important and there's always the people who are missed one way or another, you know?
To that, I, I also was going to mention earlier that I think it's going to be important to have, um, public official representation in all of these different forums. Um, I, I think it's going to be important for somebody from the group. And I think it should be different people at different times. Like, I don't think it should be one representative at all. Um, but, um, I think it's really helpful when the council can hear from the constituency in the, in these formats as well. So maybe it's, you know, a council goes to some of these meetings and another council goes to some of those meetings and, uh, and it gets mixed up uh, in a way that yeah, everybody has an opportunity to, to experience these conversations. C- Councilor Medina?
Um, after what I was just gonna say, I lost my mind. Oh, one thing I wanted to say is, I don't know, you may already know this, but I know that the Phoenix Town School District, like Phoenix, the city of Phoenix will reach out to them and be like, hey, let parents know that we're doing this or it's here's a survey. Can you let your, the parents know that if you live in Phoenix, we want them to fill it out? So that's something I'm sure they'd be willing to do for the city of town as well. Another thing is like, I love the idea of, um, you know, leaving QR codes and things like that at local businesses. Um, in my mind, when I think like, when people talk about local businesses, usually they just talk about the ones here in central talent. But if we could also like, you know, extend it to like Garcia tacos or, uh, Dollar General or Crown as well. Cause a lot of people who go to those areas, they're kind of the silent residents of talent. It'd be great if like they see it there. They might be like, oh, okay, this really pertains to me. I should go.
Councilor Byers?
On that note, I'm wondering if we could do a little collaboration with the library so that they can assess people to fill out that survey there on their computer so that they, they know all about it. They know how to frame it and contextualize it and they can just, you know, help people navigate to that page really easily.
I, I think we're hearing an awful lot of input here and, um, uh, I'm I'm hopeful that you guys will be able to, and, and really with support from public officials, you'll be able to to do as much of it as possible, but also, um, I mean, if it becomes like too much.
Mayor, thank you for saying that. I, I, there are a lot of really good ideas here, some of which I anticipated, some of which I did not. So it's, uh, I mean, I think it's a really helpful conversation. Um, I, I, one thought that does occur to me is that so, some of these, some of these tools may be more useful in the first phase and some may be more useful in the second phase. And we don't necessarily have to use every, everything every time, but, um, I, I look forward to bringing more detail playing back to you all.
Great. Counselor Coley?
Yeah, I think my question might be answered in the, with the discussion of phases. Um, I'm just curious, talking about the pre-work that Counselor Byers mentioned, which I think is really vital for this to work. Are we thinking of phase one? Be going out to the community and asking for their opinions on revenue options, like where could we raise revenue from? And then phase two would be laying out, here are the options based off of community input. Prioritize them. Or do we want to have any sort of suggestion before phase one? Um, so that people have an idea of what it is and we get maybe a little bit more constructive feedback. And another point or question that's along those lines too, is just thinking about surveys and virtual surveys in general. I like filling out surveys, but when they're long, people just don't fill them out. So they, having some of those options, like a little more defined or having some things a little bit built out. So somebody can really easily like click through and rank things easier, not have too many, like too large of a scoring range, not have a bunch of like open-ended boxes. Um, it's got to be quick and easy for people to fill out if you actually want to reach people who aren't normally engaged.
Thank you. Um, so to, to your first point, counselor, I, my, and I, I'm sure we all, we, um, need to flesh this out more. My, what's in the back of my head currently would be, um, what I, what I heard, what I heard in my head when, uh, Counselor Byers was talking about pre-work. I, I, I understood that as sort of basic education about how budgets work, how revenue works, what, what sort of the, it really, just informational.
And. And. And it's based maybe in, an opportunity to gather some sort of input at the end of that education that helps guide the creation of an FAQ sheet or just an understanding of what the top questions are from community members, which also lets us know the holes in either community attention or education.
Thank you. Um, and so I, I think what I would be likely to propose to you all that would be from that going into a phase one, that's covering a lot of the same ground, um, but more in, in a more engaged, interactive way. Um, and so capturing, um, also tho- those questions and concerns and I, uh, this is just on the, on the top of my head because it was one of the things in that League, uh, League of Oregon Cities, um, document. Getting a sense of what, what, what city government would need to look like or to commit to for people to say, yes, we, we, we want our, our, our city government to be better funded. You know, there, there, there are, I think, a number of questions that are kind of prior to the, the actual individual revenues. I think if, I think it would be great if, if during the course of that, we could start getting into, you know, make space for folks to say, these revenue ideas really make sense to me, or these are ones that I'd really like you to stay away from. Um, but then the second phase would really, really go deeper into sort of an actual proposal or set, set of options. So that, that's what's in the back of my head, but, uh, I think that's exactly what I want to discuss with you.
Councilor Byers?
That makes sense to me, especially if we're framing this information phase slash education phase as being so important when we get to the second phase. I think it's, it's vital that it stress that like, uh, um, paying attention to this part is going to make engaging in the second part um, so much more active and personal for a lot of folks and provide better input to city leadership and staff.
Counselor Coley?
Yeah, I think another piece of information that, again, it might come out from that input in phase one, but we'll need to have some information about what cuts for services look like as well, because we're most likely going to get feedback from people that, well, why don't you spend less on X, Y, or Z? And so we need to be able to show them, okay, if we spent this much less on X, this is what it would do. This is what it say, would save us, but also this is what we would lose in whatever service it was.
Are you getting what you need, Alex?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Any other input? Counselor Coley?
Yeah, my one question, just after all these wonderful ideas on top of all your great ideas, is there any assistance we can get for this project? It seems like a lot of work. I don't know if RV cog has some ability to help with this kind of stuff. I know a lot of other municipalities have already, they just did this process in their current budgets, because they were in a worse position than we were. So I, I'm curious if there's any resources out there to help. So it's not, doesn't bog down the rest of the, uh, city administration duties.
Thank you. Um, you know, I, I certainly think that, um, I think there are resources at League of Oregon Cities. I think you're right. There, there are, I'm sure there are resources in, in this valley. The, the other, um, this is tang, sort of related to what you're saying. I mean, but one of the other, I think realities is if, you know, particularly some of the smaller grassroots nonprofits, if we are serious about asking for their help, you know, we will probably need to, um, support them in doing that, uh, financially. Um, so I think that's, that's one of the ways that, you know, uh, asking them to do what they do best, which is really. asking them to do what they do best, which is really bring the people and help us engage in the people that they know, and then we can focus on developing the message. But, um, I, I haven't honestly, I, I appreciate the question, I haven't thought about it deeply yet, but, um, I think you're absolutely right, there are, there are, there are ways, a lot of ways for us not to try to do this all ourselves. Would make it a lot better.
Uh, Council Medina and then Council Byers?
And to that point, I know we've talked about like campaign flyers on doors and, um, producing data at businesses, but I wanna make sure like those things that we put out there are also translated, um, when necessary. So kind of like when, uh, councillor Colay said about using other organizations, that would be another great way to partner with other organizations.
Council Byers?
At least in my experience, I'm like gathering like this level of stakeholders to generate a really cohesive outreach. I'm wondering if the city has, um, the funds available to hire a marketing and communications person to take that lift and not only generate like, or help refine the content that's being shared outward, but also really cultivate and provide the support to the partner or an organization, so they just have essentially a toolkit for what they need to do the outreach that we're asking them to do.
I, I think that's a great question. I, I, um, as I think about or I haven't thought deeply about what the budget for this effort is, I, I'm confident that I know we need to pay people to put together really excellent materials. Um, I'm confident that we are gonna need to, if we're serious about engaging with, so I said, smaller nonprofits, that we're gonna have to help, help them help us financially. In terms of, um, hiring, uh, a, a marketing or communications lead, I think that's an interesting, it's, it's an idea that I haven't, I haven't thought about yet. So, um, I appreciate the suggestion. But well, uh, part of, part of what I think the next discussion that we need to have with you all is what, what is the right sort of level of budget and staff for these various, various pieces.
I know this is gonna be tough early on. Were you raising your hand? Um, this is gonna be tough early on, but as we look at that budget, I would really also wanna see kind of um, our projected you know, I, I, the right word escapes me, but sort of projected numbers of people that we intend to get the information out to based on the budget that we write. So kind of looking at an ROI really, um, uh, return on investment for uh, the expenditures of this. I think this is, you know, it's an innovative approach. Um, and I appreciate that a lot. Because I think the objective is to, to touch base with as many constituents as possible. It would be really good to make sure that we're tracking the data um, and the reach uh, for future use of, of an approach like this. Council Byers?
I think that actually this engagement, um, plan that you've outlined aligns well with one of the Ford Family Foundation's smaller grants. And, uh, with its focus on economic revitalization, because not only is this an effort for the city to stabilize financially, but also we're discussing input from the community that looks to their own economic resiliency. So.
Do you think it's available to a city?
I think so.
Council Penamrath?
Just to piggyback on that a little bit, the other, the other theme I see that, that by interest a grant would be, you know, civics, right? Um, so people could participate in their democracy because they understand how government works, and that's another mission I think that might resonate with this effort.
Yeah, I appreciate the, uh, not, not only the clarifying information, but the ability to manage misinformation as well um, during this critical time. And I think, um, as we, you know, as, as the team that is brought together to do this work, uh, develops those materials, I think that's an objective that I see you, you touched a little bit on it in some of your, I mean, like a successful approach kind of a thing, but it's one of, probably one of the most important things about this whole project is that clear information. Yeah, and that's makes, makes it, uh, easy for people to make good, informed decisions without being misled or misinformed. I appreciate that about it a lot. Are there any, is there any other input? I think we have. I mean, I'll keep going until you, everybody feels yeah, that's why I'm getting ready to move on to that. So do you feel like we're?
This was fabulous.
Okay, great. Um, all right, so, uh, go ahead.
Sorry, just when I wanted to add more, that's great.
Yeah, very good. All right, Alex, thank you. Um, all right, so item number three on the agenda is discussion of chronic nuisance code, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and Chief Snook is with me and, uh, engaged, uh, your city attorney, Dave Loman, and several conversations about, about, um, chronic nuisance ordinances. Um, I'll give a quick overview of sort of how all of them work, um, and then maybe, um, uh, the, ask the, the chief to say a few words about her perspective and then, um, then turn to you all for questions or, and, uh, what, where to go next or where to dig deeper into detail. So, um, fundamentally, um, the, the Oregon statute provides for, um, individuals or local governments to be able to bring a civil suit against people who own or operate a, a, a residence that is be- becoming a, a real nuisance to their neighbors. That the, um, individual cities can, um, also building on that framework, um, enumerate additional, um, sort of crimes or activities that count towards when you're counting up wh- whether a property is, um, a nuisance. One of the fundamental sort of assumptions of the, of all the ordinances and, and the statute is that this is repeated, this is repeated behavior that's becoming a real, a real problem for neighbors. So, uh, local governments can, um, and the, so somebody today in talent could actually sue under this, this state ordinance already. They could bring a civil suit. But, um, what this, by the city, uh, establishing an ordinance, we can sort of shape that process and provide some more, some more flexibility in some cases and some more guide rails. So the place that you can provide more flexibility is the state statute has a fairly limited number of things to look at when you're determining it, uh, a nuisance. And then you'll see in the staff report, the local cities that have adopted these ordinances have expanded that in quite a number of ways. And so that's, that's one that, where this local government can provide more flexibility. And then they also, they're, they also provide a structure for, um, essentially when the city wants to be the one bringing this suit to court. So how, what threshold of the number of activities um, and who in the city makes the determination, what kind of warning process there needs, there, there is for the property owner. That's, that's not required in statute. But most, most of the cities who have adopted these kinds of things to create a sort of interim step, where either where somebody's close to going over the edge, or they've already gone over the edge and they're offered an opportunity to present a plan to, to, to reduce the, the nuisance that there, um, there, that is present. Why don't I stop with that as just sort of a high-level framing of the, what the tool is? And then, uh, ask the chief for, um, the chief's perspective.
So, as, as most of you know, I've worked with the city for, in the service for 25 years from the city of talent. And there's a handful of properties that would, uh, really would have fallen under some sort of chronic nuisance, uh, code. Um, generally, when we have residents that become, um, high call volume residents due to you know, drug activity or accumulations of job, just, um, just chronic, uh, kind of low-level things that are disturbing the peace of the neighborhood. Um, we'll notify the property owner. Um, you know, sometimes I'll see like our officers report, like they went to a house several times and and I, or, you know, I'll assign the officer, like, hey, just contact the property owner. They may not be aware these things are going on, and we'll tell them, you know, do you know, we've been here five times in the last two weeks for various, uh, issues. And generally that, uh, you know, deals with the issue, but um, what we're finding is we have, you know, just two or three houses in the community currently that, um, we, we get quite a bit of calls on, and, you know, we've contacted the property owner and it's their children living in the residence and so they're not really doing anything about, uh, the issue. And so then we are hearing from the neighbors, um, that they're, you know, fear of their safety, um, we see drug deals going on. Um, there's people coming and going all hours of the night. And, um, and our hands are really kind of tied on what, uh, what we can do. And looking back in some of these, uh, crimes and, um, ordinances that were related to chronic nuisance, um, you know, really, there's only a few in the history that I've worked here that I think would, would have been candidates for this. Um, we're just dealing with, uh, one house in particular that the neighbors are pretty vocal at the moment. And so that person had brought, you know, well, why don't we have a chronic nuisance ordinance? So, um, we've been, as Alex said, working with Mr. Loman and, um, trying to come up with, uh, you know, having meetings, meetings with the public, listening to their concerns and, um, this would just be a tool, uh, that would be used on a higher level, um, you know, department heads, the chief, uh, you know, how I see it running would, would be that, you know, we have the issues, we would stat that with the city attorney. Um, it's not something, you know, ultimately we will comply. Our code specialist, um, we issue very minimal code violation citations. Uh, we probably issued two or three this year. Um, the most recent was for a dangerous dog that bit somebody and their dog. Um, so, you know, we, we're, we're not about enforcement, we're about compliance. And when we can't get compliance, our hands are tied. Then we have the community that's questioning why we're not doing anything. So it would just be a, a tool in our toolbox to use for the city to, uh, you know, remedy issues that come up in neighborhoods.
Thanks, Chief. Um, and, uh, one, one thing I, I would, uh, councillor Clay asked the question about how this relates to code, code compliance and code, uh, code enforcement. We, we did, uh, actually have a conversation with, um, City of Ashland Code Compliance to understand their perspective. It is, it is largely, is largely about criminal activity. But, um, what they have found is where they, the places that have repeated criminal activity also have repeated code compliance issues. So although it's, uh, it, it is sort of two hot sides of the house working together and, and it's really the as they operate, the, the police in the lead, it's very helpful to code compliance and getting some um, in, in some, in some cases where there are issues. Um, and I guess, I think we'd welcome sort of factual questions that we, we may not have filled in yet and/or further discussion, thinking about those factual questions. One of the things I didn't cover in my overview is sort of what's the result of when you, when you bring one of these suits. So there, there are three remedies that you can ask for. You can ask for a temporary closure of the property. You can ask for a fine, and you can ask for, um, basically, basically assessment of the cost that it takes to abate the situation. So, you know, if there's, part of the problem is, uh, several car, auto, autos in the front yard, and you can essentially ask the court to, to, um, uh, require a payment from the person to, to cover the city's costs and in cleaning, cleaning up a property or addressing an issue.
Council Penamrath?
Thanks. Um, so the court is the one that makes the decision. But does that mean that it's, it would fall upon our staff, our staff attorney to, you know, um, to prosecute it essentially, or how, how does that work? I'm concerned about what is the impact on staff time.
Absolutely. So, uh, yes, uh, the, the city attorney would, would be the one bringing the, a civil, a civil suit. And, um, and I, I should, I should let Dave speak. I, I imagine any one of these cases could be a significant burden. But we have a very limited number of total cases that would qualify for this level of activity. But Dave, please.
Well, yeah, it would, would be up to the city attorney, I think, to, um, to file a case, um, and, uh, and prosecute, attempt to prosecute it. I do think uh, and, and important question is who bears the burden, uh, of, of going to court? And right now, under our, um, existing nuisance, um, provisions, um, basically, the city can impose, um, an abatement requirement. Uh, they can, uh, basically order someone to, uh, comply with our nuisance ordinance. And then it's, the burden is on the person, um, uh, about whom a complaint has been, um, issued. To take it to court if they, if they feel it's unfair. And in some ways, that's, that's the most efficient way to deal with, um, with nuisances. At the same time, I have to say, I think we work very hard, the police department works very hard to achieve compliance. Our goal is compliance, um, and, and not prosecutions. And it doesn't happen very often, the one way or another, either city initiating a court action or the person complained against initiating court uh, action. That doesn't happen very often. Uh, happily, we usually can get compliance, uh, without court intervention. But, uh, the, to my mind, and I haven't discussed this fully, you know, with the chief, but to my mind, chronic nuisance ordinance uh, does put the burden on us to take, to take the action of getting the court to, to make a ruling. And so there is and that's kind of the difference between our current nuisance provisions and a chronic nuisance ordinance that lists, uh, additional provisions. Uh, but a chronic nuisance, um, ordinance does allow you to sort of broaden the list of you know, concerns, um, to include, for instance, criminal activity.
Um, just to add, when I talked to the city of Ashland Police Department about their chronic nuisance, which they've had since 97, I was told usually when the chief sends a letter to the property owner, uh, basically outlining the violations, um, they get compliance. Um, they only have one lien so far. So, and that was by the sounds of it, is a pretty serious, uh, issue that have been going on for years and years. So, um, you know, again, it's, it would be a tool that we could use for the community, um, who is experiencing uh, the livability issues within their neighborhood.
Yeah, go ahead.
Did you say one lien?
Yes, only on a property, yes.
Yeah, I, I, the, I think the data that we don't have, um, that would be helpful. Um, and I'm not asking for us to delay, um, whatever process happens so that we can get this data. I think it's a pretty good guess is not just you cite the whole
You cite the homes, some of which I'm familiar with as well, that have been what would be a chronic nuisance over the years. And the question isn't how many have we had over the years, but how many of those would have led to an actual civil suit? I think it's something worth, it's something worth guessing, right? And so when you ask, when you talk to Ashland and you talk about how many news, public or chronic nuisance cases have there been over the years? And then ask the second question, how many of them actually went to court? I bet it's a very different number, considerably less is my guess. Um, I think what I, you know, um, what I. Is worth. Further discussion maybe or, or not, um, is. Not so much, um, what? How we would be as a council utilizing staff capacity in order. Um, to offset probably what is a challenge for the police department's capacity. Uh, it seems to me that it could be half a dozen of one and six of the other. Um, but whether or not the residents in that neighborhood. Would want the city to leverage their attorney, um, to the, to, to the benefit of the entire. Neighborhood. Um, and I, you know, to me, that's the larger question is, is not so much. Um, it, it's really about how, how the community would want. Um. This to progress. If they were living in that neighborhood. And, um, I mean, I, I know of one of the houses and I, I, I know. Of the neighbors that lived in that neighborhood. And, um, I visited that neighborhood and I talked to neighbors, I knocked on doors and, and, and they were exhausted by it. And, um, if we'd had something at this time, I know, um. I know. Clearly what, what they would have wanted us to use their attorney for, um. So, I mean, I, I appreciate hearing that. And I realize I'm kind of dipping into deliberation here, so I'll, I'll wrap it up. But I appreciate hearing, um. That. Uh, the, the, the Ashland Police Department reports that once, once a letter goes out from the chief. More often than not, I would imagine is the right answer, um, compliance happens and. And things get. Right for the neighborhood. And, um, I think that's an important piece. Hey, it'd be interesting to get the data. Not asking you for it, but it'd be really, I, I suspect it would be, um, pretty clear. Uh, Council Penamra?
Yeah, I just want to say, just, um, reading generally about nuisance orient, uh, nuisance ordinances. I'd be, I'd be concerned to make sure that this didn't become a tool that could be. That, that folks maybe with, you know, um. You know, vulnerable communities, maybe folks with behavioral health issues, special, special homes for, um, that, that actually group homes for those kinds of folks. That they weren't like unfairly, um. Burdened by this kind of, kind of annoyance. So just those things that if you read about that can be, that can happen in these situations. That's just something I'd be, I'd be listening for.
I think, yeah, that can be caused by neighbors too. I mean, uh, that, that complaint can be caused by neighbors is what I'm.
Right, exactly.
Their body can be the people that are next door.
Well, exactly, yeah.
Sorry, can I have a re-? I would, I would, I would encourage the council to ask for draft ordinance to come through. Would anybody, does anybody object to that? You're not going to ask for a consensus. Yeah. It doesn't look like anybody objects, but I would take that as a consensus to have a draft open and brought. Um. Does anybody want to take an opportunity to? Highlight anything in this report that they might want to see in that, um, not necessarily now, but. Um, I would imagine that Dave and Alex would welcome input. As they create this draft because it would come before the body and for decision and, and so. Would that be an acceptable way for you all to take any input that somebody might favor something in some of this report they want to see in their draft?
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I failed to include, I think one, one of those high level questions that would be great to get input on now is. Um, there is, uh, one, one approach is, um. Sort of putting somebody on notice when they're close to the threshold. And then if they cross the threshold, the city then could potentially act. Another approach is waiting until they cross the threshold and requiring them to develop a, an abatement plan. And manage to that abatement plan. And, uh, you know, if there's a preference of one of those two approaches in general, that, that, that would be helpful.
Question about that?
Yes, yeah.
So one doesn't preclude the other, is that right? You could do the warning and then. Once they've crossed that threshold.
Absolutely, yeah, that's true.
Is that more the PD's department, um, from the police department's, um, view, is that more onerous?
Um, I wouldn't be opposed. Yeah, I think that's a good option. Um. I do find that sometimes we warn people several times and at some point it's, you know. We've got to move past that and, and take care of business, um. In a sense, I, I mean, we're. Like we have people that will say, well, I can't do this for two months. Okay, well, we'll check back and if it's not taking care of them. We'll look at some other options, but that's, I, I think that would be, yeah, I'm happy with that.
Counselor Penamra?
Yeah, I think, you know, as many, if the goal is compliance, as many avenues towards compliance, um, as possible. That's where I would, and, you know, just a kind of a, a chance to. Correct the situation and also, um. Again, to, to make sure that if it's complaint driven by neighbors, that it's, that it's not an unjust situation. Yeah, and, and we're, we're pretty good judges of character of like, what, what is the real issue here? Is there an issue or not? And, and a lot of times it is, yeah, some people's standards are not reasonable and we recognize that as well.
Yeah, would my colleague consider as many avenues as practical?
Well, I'm, I'm not remembering very well, but I'm, I'm kind of reminded of some, uh, fair housing, um. Uh, training that I was at where we're talking about people with intellectual, uh, disabilities. Um, and how, you know, they, they need sometimes special accommodations, um, for, for situations. And there can be, there could be behavior that people find, you know, um, not kosher, but this is, this is the way it is. That's, that's kind of where I'm thinking of. I wouldn't want to create an onerous situation for people who are just trying to live, basically.
Thank you, Counselor. If I could, could mention just to be clear that none of these ordinances are complaint driven. They're all, they're all based on a finding by the, the city that there is, there is in fact evidence that, 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 that. You know, that the crime or, or the, the nuisance occurred.
Thanks for that clarification. That they don't need to be convicted of the crimes, the preponderance of the evidence would be enough for a judicial officer. They make the determination if there's enough there. If I can follow up, but I think, I guess, the com- the complaint driven is, is just like, like it is now with other things. You don't, you don't, if nobody calls about my weeds, you don't know about my weeds.
This is the bridge to, I have one more question.
I, I, I would put in, in this situation, I mean, we, we, a lot of these crimes are things that the police are at, at. I mean, our, our criminal enforcement is not entirely complaint driven. I mean, there, there are, there's DUI, there's, yeah, I mean, there are, there are a number of crimes our police are actively looking for regardless of complaint. And, and some of those are in this universe.
Yeah. And I, I, and I think I might have been just looking at some of the things like, you know, junk vehicles outside the house, the, those kinds of things that. That also make up nuisance ordinances is kind of what I had in mind when I said.
Absolutely, it's a mix, yeah.
Yeah, great. I think we'll be able to really, uh, work on the details when we see the draft. Um, okay. Is there anything else? All right, um, so the next. Um, I'm on the agenda. I'm having a lot of fun with my. Additional screen here. In a real groove, um. So if there's nothing else. This meeting is adjourned and we'll take a five minute break before we, um, convene the city council meeting. Um, he turns the microphone off from the, he wants us to leave a room.